Public comment cards?
They're right there.
Public comment. Dr. Clyde Williams, this meeting's open. Dr. Williams?
Dr. Clyde Williams, 4115 Barrett Road, Elsreno Northeast LA. Last weekend, there was a two-day conference on goods movement. We didn't see anybody from the City Hall, or the Harvard Department, but maybe they were in the background. However, it did have a title of "Moving Ahead Together." Two days, over 100 people attended. Well, we had serious hearings, and one of the issues was how to get goods out of the ports, through the communities, and on their way to wherever they were going. However, there was a question as to, are these linked? And the current efforts by the MTA regarding the 710 are, might I say, piecemealing it. That is, you go from the port of Los Angeles or Long Beach, you go across the LADOT streets to the freeways, and then the 710 South expansion is linked with the 710 North extension. And all of these are linked to Antonovich's desire for an inland, not empire, but inland desert logistics center in Palmdale and Victorville. So, we're quite concerned that there's no program of moving these pieces together and looking at them as an overall transportation project and program. And the linkage between those and the rail yards that are being proposed all work together. So, we're quite concerned that all of these are being segmented, piecemealed into different areas. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have you made your note, Mr. Dr. Williams, known to the MTA?
The which?
The MTA.
Yeah.
Have you made the same comment to them?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you.
But they say, oh, no, it's not piecemealing.
Okay, that's okay. They may have a different opinion, doctor. You know, different doctors have different opinions, right? That's why people get second opinions. Okay, thank you very much. Now, Mr. Clerk, item one. Michael Bonin, come up here.
Under item one, the Board of Airport Commissioners submits for council approval the First Amendment to Concession Agreement with Smart Cart for the operation and management of the luggage cart concession at Los Angeles International Airport, and also at Los Angeles, Ontario International Airport. The amendment would extend the current three-year term by another three years with two one-year options for renewal. And the CAO has submitted a report and recommendation for approval of the First Amendment.
Thank you very much, staff.
Hi, Debbie Bowers, Deputy Executive Director of Commercial Development Group at Los Angeles World Airports. What this will give us is the ability to keep the luggage carts, which are provided in all the terminals at LAX, excuse me, and at Los Angeles, Ontario International Airport. We provide these carts at a charge for domestic passengers, and we provide them free as a courtesy to all of our international passengers. We've negotiated the deal, we've added the term, we did change some of the financial terms. We kept our MAG, which is $2,750,000, which is the largest MAG in the country. We kept our gross percentage, which is 55%. We did increase the charges that we, the payments that are we making to Smart Cart for each luggage cart that is used in the international facility.
Great. Very good. And we have one public comment card for Arthur Spring?
Yes, I'm available to answer any questions. I'm from Smart Cart.
Smart Cart, good. Everybody's happy, you're happy, airport's happy, public's gonna be happy, recommend approval. Thank you very much. Item number two, we're gonna hold for Ms. Han. Item number three.
Under item three, the-
Staff, if you could wait two, until the other committee members come, in case they have any questions.
Okay.
Item number three, we're holding number two.
The Board of Airport Commissioners submits for approval the Third Amendment to a contract with Kay Schuler for legal services related to federal regulatory issues and litigation matters at LAX. The proposed amendment would extend the contract term by six months to expire on May 19, 2011. The CAO has submitted a report and recommendation for approval of the contract amendment.
Good morning. Tim Daze, Deputy City Attorney, assigned to the airport. And what this does is just gives us an additional six months, there's no more money on it, so we can wrap up some of the items that we have ongoing with the feds.
Gina Marie Lindsay supports it?
Absolutely.
Okay. Recommend approval.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item number four, we're gonna hold. Item number five. We're joined by the Chair of the Committee, the Honorable Janice Han. Get set down. We just threw a public comment and did some other things as well.
I was hoping you'd go to the whole agenda.
Right, we're almost there. So, I'll turn it back to Ms. Han. We'll call item number five.
Great. One, two, three, okay. So, you wanna do two?
Well, we're on five right now. We're on five.
I have to skip to five.
It's just one, two, three, four, five, and then you skip a few, and then you go back. It's the trick I did.
Okay.
Under item five, the Board of Airport Commissioners submits for approval a replacement lease with China Airlines for the continued use of an air cargo building and land that was originally developed by China Airlines at LAX. The new lease would generate 1.2 million in annual rent, or approximately 6 million over a term of five years. In addition, China Airlines would pay a negotiated rent amount for the interim period between July 2013, 2008, when the original lease expired, and ownership of the cargo building reverted to LAWA, and April 1, 2010, when the new lease provisions will begin to apply. The CAO has submitted a report and recommendation for approval of the lease.
Thank you. Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
Go ahead. I was just gonna say, you know, the original lease expired in 2008, so maybe give us a sense of why the delay, what took so long and sort of negotiated newly?
Your name for the record.
Oh, Debbie Bowers again, Deputy Executive Director of Commercial Development Group of Los Angeles World Airports. We were in negotiations with China for a while. They were concerned about what their cargo activity would be, so they weren't really willing to sign up until they understood what their new routes would be, or what their bulk passage would be.
Was five years, what's the reason for the five-year lease? Is that the only thing we were willing to do, or?
We're trying now, while we're trying to figure out a whole strategy for the airfield, to keep everyone on shorter-term leases, so that we have the ability to combine things and do something more strategic financially for us.
So, what will happen at the end of five years?
Um.
We don't know.
We don't know. But we will start looking at it probably within the third year of the contract.
Good idea.
Yes.
Okay, any questions?
Just highlight to me what the specifics are of the deal.
Well, the one thing that we're most excited about is that they agreed to a $17 per square foot rate for the building. It's the highest cargo rate we have on the airport, and it's helping us to raise a lot of the-
Other fees?
A lot of the market, yes. So, that's helped us a lot. They also agreed to pay the retro rent, or three-quarters of the retro rent that we would've gotten had we done the lease when it expired.
Okay.
So, we negotiated that into the deal.
Okay.
And we're not, I mean, the building's in good shape, so we're not requiring any new improvements or anything.
Sounds like a good deal.
Great. Recommend approval.
There's a motion?
Motion.
Okay, without objection, we'll approve.
And Madam Chair, prior to your arrival, items number three and one were approved. And I could ask if the clerk could recall the roll on it, those are items, you've got good reports, yes?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenthal, you okay with three and one?
I agree, it's great, sure.
Okay, then that leaves two and four left, and I see this number six, but I don't see it on the agenda, so, for that card. Oh, six is on the back.
Six is on, yeah. Yeah, it's part class. So, let's go to two, which is the Van Nuys Golf Course.
Under item two, the Board of Airport Commissioners submits for approval a lease with Van Nuys Golf Management Partners to refurbish, manage, operate, and maintain Van Nuys Golf Course at Van Nuys Airport for a term of 10 years, with an option to extend the term for up to 20, an additional 20 years, if the lessee meets a number of specified conditions. Committee members should note that the lessee plans to contract with another golf management company to carry out the day-to-day management and operation of the golf course. And the CAO has submitted a report and recommendation for approval of the lease.
Okay.
Okay, Debbie Bowers.
I know we do have somebody from Tony Cardenas' office, Miguel, if you wanna come up here and sit here while we'll let Debbie kind of explain the deal, and then I know the council member had some issues and concerns about this.
This is the third time that we've tried to get someone to run that golf course. We were successful. The Van Nuys Golf Management Partners were the only respondents. Luckily, they gave us a good proposal. It's a 10-year deal with a 20-year option, and the 20-year option will only be exercised if they meet certain terms and conditions, the main one being that they'd have to invest another $2 million in the golf course to upgrade it. They are currently going to be investing a little over $720,000 to do some work now, to make it more presentable, and to fix some of the greens, and add new nets, and do other things for the community. So, and they will be running the golf course. They are associated with American Golf, so we do know that we have people who do know how to run a golf course.
But it says that they will not be running the golf course, but they'll be contracting out with a management operation.
Which I think is American Golf.
It doesn't say that in my report.
Are they here?
Yes, they're here.
Come on up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yes, you want us to tell us a little bit about your company, and how you plan to operate this golf course?
Certainly. My name is Ed Sloss. I'm the President of Van Nuys Golf Partners, and also Southern California Golf. The first question, the principles of Van Nuys Golf Partners are the same principles of Southern California Golf. One is a entity that we've capitalized and we use for investment purposes. The other one is actually the management company. It's the exact same structure that American Golf uses. American Golf is the operating company. They have another company called National Golf, which is the investment company and does-
So, which one will be running the golf, managing the day-to-day operations?
The management company, Southern California Golf.
Southern California Golf?
Correct.
Okay, and where else do they manage golf courses?
In Phoenix, Arizona.
Okay.
Paradise Valley.
Okay, so they've never done anything out here in Southern California?
Well, we have, yes. Actually, David Price, who is the principal and the owner, is the founder of Southern California Golf. So, we've actually operated over 300 golf courses in the United States, England, and in Australia and Japan.
But what do you know about Southern California Golf?
Well, Southern, it's the same people.
Okay.
So, the expertise that we brought to managing those properties, actually David built Westchester Golf Course.
Okay, all right. Well, we know about Westchester Golf Course.
That's right.
Okay. I'm gonna let, and stay here, because we might have some further questions. I know the council member had some concerns.
Miguel Franco, Council District 6. The councilman, while we're happy, you know, we have selected bidder, councilman did have some concerns regarding the community benefits aspect of the proposal. He felt it was a bit vague, you know, open-ended. We don't have very many specifics. We've recently spoken to LAWA staff and to the proposed bidder, and hopefully we can get some more answers to those questions before Friday. You know, we have very underserved population in the valley, you know. Many of our children have never been to a golf course, have never picked up a golf club, for that matter. So, you know, we wanna make sure that these residents are also served and have an opportunity to learn-
Right.
Learn how to play.
Right. Was there, in the negotiation of this, was there a discussion on the community benefits?
Yes.
And what are you proposing to highlight as community benefits?
There's three, and I'll start with the first question. American Golf started a first-tee program for children, and it's to introduce really young people, whether disadvantaged or not, to the game of golf. At Van Nuys, we would do that with a PGA Pro. He would bring them out, teach them safety, teach them golf etiquette, putting, chipping, and driving, and hopefully get them ready to take them out on the course. We don't wanna take them out on the course if they're gonna be shooting golf balls into other, you know, fairways, and it's not safe for them.
True, I've seen grown men do that, though.
Well, all the time.
Yes, that's right.
Yeah, well, the thought is that we can do that, and we try to do that in a fun environment, on the driving range. So, we do have a program for that. Typically, we will also adopt-
And is that going to be, that will start immediately? How does that work? Is it free?
Uh, well, no. There is a small charge. It's relatively free. I think typically, we charge about $5 for an hour.
And when will that start?
Well, the first primary issue for the community are the capital improvements. The golf course has been extremely neglected for a long period of time. The driving range is in disrepair, disrepair, and one of our initial capital improvements is to fix the driving range and get it ready for that. So, upon the completion of that, which we expect to be in the first year of operation, that would happen. But first-
How long, what's your timetable on that?
First year.
First, the first year?
Correct.
Okay. Go ahead.
So, first, we would finish the driving range. The bathrooms are awful, to say the least, and all those things need to get done. So, hopefully, we have the property upgraded to have it inviting. And the most important thing for the community is the quality of the course, and the speed of play is what brings people back to a golf course. So, we wanna get those in place, make sure that we've got the right teaching staff there, and then we will begin the T1 program.
Well, I think that what the councilmen, I mean, obviously, all those improvements are critical and important for those who are golfers, and who obviously were looking for a nice, well-kept place to play. I think what the councilman was interested in was, again, reaching out to a real underserved community, particularly young people, who maybe aren't golfers, and would you be willing, besides the first tee, I know the council member even mentioned to me, would there ever be an opportunity, maybe a certain couple hours, you know, on a certain day, that maybe young people could play for free at the course? Just to really say, look, we really want to, you know, reach out, oh, there he is now.
Perfect timing.
Would you be willing to, you know, really offer something that would be really special to this part of Los Angeles, which, as the councilman said, there's a lot of young people who could use this kind of a positive activity? So, I think that's, but I'll let him speak for himself.
Can I speak too?
Yes.
Okay. But could just have questions here. This is airport property?
Yes.
And this is nine holes?
There's a nine-hole executive course, and then there's an 18-hole par three.
Forty acres, it's pretty big.
For 36 total acres. Has Los Angeles City Recreation and Parks shown any interest in this?
They did not show up to the pre-proposal meeting or bid on it, and we did let them know that we were going out of there.
You did call them and invite them on this here?
Yes.
Okay, and as, Ms. Han, when you were speaking about the need for children articulated by Mr. Cardenas, have you reached out to the high schools in the San Fernando Valley that have golf teams to try to create a place that they could come?
We've been instructed not to approach anyone until the lease is done.
Okay.
Not even to enter the property until-
There's, the only thing I would just say, there's an opportunity, I got that, there's an opportunity to do great things for young people. So, you could figure that out.
Okay.
We'll go from there. Thank you, Ms. Han.
Thank you, Mr. Lavand. Council member, would you like to?
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the committee. I think it'd be wonderful to give this organization an opportunity to, since they were the winning bidder, and it's my understanding the only bidder, it'd be great to see them bring this facility up to par. Right now, it's in shambles, but interestingly enough, even though it's in shambles, it's, I think it's bringing the city on average of about $500,000 in revenue, excuse me, LAWA, about $500,000 in revenue. Yet, at the same time, I understand how a new investor and/or partner would invest money, hard dollars, into the project, and therefore, we'd have some kind of compromise when it comes to how much the minimum amount that LAWA would expect on an annual basis, looking at that balance. But I think that, I have yet to reckon with the idea that LAWA actually has negotiated a contract that is fair and balanced, both for the proprietor and also for LAWA. And with all due respect, LAWA is owned by the people. I think that we could do a little bit better job on that, tighten up the language. And when it comes to the community benefits, I see a lot of language where instruction will be given, they're gonna go ahead and try to involve new golfers or potential golfers, et cetera, but a lot of generic language, but nothing really specific, talking about, we will serve at least X number of children from the community. We will give discounts at least of this range, or what have you. Maybe the kids can get a card and say, on Thursday afternoons, at one o'clock, after one o'clock on weekdays, or at one o'clock on Thursdays, or weekdays, or what have you, that those kids with that card, those special kids who are members of your organization, that you've been enticing and teaching and getting involved, that they can come play for five bucks, or something like that. Because that's one of the biggest problems with that community, is that. But I don't see details as to what those standards are gonna be. I see a lot of generic language where the community is gonna be served. We will have programs, et cetera, but I don't see specifics. And the problem that I have without, not having specifics, once the contract is inked, both sides sign it, then it's subject to interpretation, and people can say, well, that's not what we thought, and then they can say, well, that's what we came up with. And this happens to be my district, happens to be the community I grew up in, it happens to be an area where kids don't normally play golf. I have a great story. When I was a legislator, I actually started a free program, free, not $5, a free program, to have instructors help kids out at Alcariso Park in Silmar, it happened to be a county park, and lo and behold, this young girl, at the age of nine, was introduced to golf. She fell in love with golf. I reacquainted with her when my colleague, then council president Alex Vidia honored her in council, and then it was her father that said, Angela started in your program way back in the day, about five years ago. When I met her, she was a four handicap. And then later on, as I got to know the family, she actually was ranked nationally as top 30 girls in the age-of-16 bracket, top 30. And she didn't even play in that many tournaments. So, again, her family wasn't able to promote her like some families are able to encourage their kids and put them in tournaments around the country, but even with her minimal exposure to tournaments, or what have you, it was that one free program that got this young lady to actually get accepted to UC Berkeley, the first kid from San Fernando High School, the first girl, the first young lady ever from San Fernando High School history, happens to be my alma mater, and Alex Vidia, and Felipe Fuentes, who's now a state assemblyman, the first girl to ever get accepted on a golf scholarship to a four-year university.
That's a great story.
So, my point is this.
That's a great story.
That program was free.
Right.
That program had an expectation and a commitment to include X number of kids. I don't see those kinds of details here. I would like to see those details made commitment to LAWA, and also LAWA to make sure that they expect those things, and it's in writing, and as far as I'm concerned, everybody will be happy. More importantly, the community will be served specifically with a certain minimum expectation.
Right.
Not generics like I see right now.
Right. I appreciate that. And for those who don't know, Tony has such an incredible commitment to really working with young people, keeping them out of gangs, as we all do. I mean, we're all looking for a way to, you know, reduce, you know, the violence in Los Angeles, which makes it a healthier, happier place for everyone to do business. And starting kids young in some sort of an after-school activity really puts them on their way, not only to not join a gang, but obviously, to even go beyond that, and succeed, and have a ticket to higher education. So, what I'd like to see maybe then, is, I'm gonna recommend that we don't approve this today. If there was a way that, before this comes to council, when is it coming to council, Friday? Okay, well, we'll see. Maybe not. Maybe we'll put it off a week. If there was a way that we could, 'cause I think you've said a lot of the stuff that we wanted to hear, but if there was a way we could firm it up in the lease, so that we could have a real commitment, and, you know, that community could have, as Tony said, a real expectation of how we could, you know, sort of[1477.54] as Tony said, a real expectation of how we could, you know, sort of really reach out and do some of the things that you already talked about. If you don't have a problem with that, maybe we could work on putting that language in the lease.
What I would suggest, Madam Chair, is since it says here in our documents that we have to make a decision by November the 5th, so that's a week from Friday, that would give time for the council member to sit with them, bring it back to committee, and we could nail things down in a more protected.
Right.
And my suggestion was certainly you would include Councilmember Cardenas. I think
he has some, obviously, clear language you would like to see in there.
Yeah, and it is a bit awkward for Lawa to take a facility like this, that I'm on record, both in committee and in the Lawa process, of having been very, very interested in this particular facility. It actually went out to bid before. They actually promoted, the staff did promote that there should be a potential winner of that bid. They negotiated. Those negotiations fell apart. So, my point is that my office has been extremely involved in making sure that some of the details are included. And I find it kind of awkward that Lawa did not work with my office or my staff the way they have voluntarily in the past. We've had a great relationship on this whole process. For some reason, on this particular bid, where there was only one bidder, there really wasn't any, the kind of communication we had before. So, now we only have about a week to have that kind of communication.
The charter doesn't allow the council to amend the lease. You would have to approve or disapprove it within this timeframe. And if you're going to amend it, it would have to go back through the board.
My suggestion, just administratively, is that we could approve it tentatively based on whatever Mr. Cardenas negotiated.
Here's the thing I want to say, because the CAO said, "Is there a city attorney who could stayed here?" Because I agree with everything you're trying to do, and I love that story, the young lady. But I, no, let me just say that I think, I find it unusual that we would try to have someone here. We should direct the Lawa to do our work.
We're really talking to Lawa.
Yeah, right. I just want to make it clear, and have a city attorney.
Here's a suggestion that we've done in the past, is we've approved the lease on some other contracts, and we've had a separate MOU, or a separate letter, that kind of goes along with it, that would codify some of these issues.
We've dealt with.
We've done that before on some things, and that becomes a document that, you know, certainly, if it's a memorandum of understanding that's signed by all the parties, actually is something that we can hold accountable.
Sure, but I think the awkwardness of this particular situation, because this is something that would have to be approved by the board, by the time the council were to, say the council were to approve it, even with that side document, that MOU, I'm not sure. You can ask Lawa. I don't think that they have the authority to sign such a document on behalf of Lawa without having gone through the board, even if it's separate, apart from the original action that the board took. So, that being the case, would the board be, would the staff at Lawa be able to present to the board before next Friday, the 5th, in order for the council to know that it's not only an intent, but it's actually something that is actually...
My question is, why do we have only till November 5th to agree to this?
Leases normally have 30, council has 30 days to act, to approve or disapprove from the date of receipt by the council.
Madam Chair, one of the things that's interesting about this, if the council, if the committee and/or the council were to go ahead and reject this, all it does is send it back to Lawa. And then Lawa could actually send it back identically, or they can go ahead and do the work that they do, send it through their board process, and send it back to us. So, and the fact of the matter is, there's nothing going on here where somebody's trying to impede the progress of the proposed winning bidder, is there's only one bidder anyway. So, the bottom line is, if it were to go back, we wouldn't even have to worry about anybody saying, "Well, why don't you take the second-best bid?" There was no second-best bid. So, basically, this is a quasi sole-source contract that we're actually dealing with right now, because they were the only bidder. So, Lawa has every...
Ms. Hahn, would you like us to do, would you like us to not approve it?
Yeah, because the bottom line is, that side document very likely wouldn't be in force and effect until after the council were to take action. And the bottom line is, looking at the backdrop that this is the only bidder, and we're not worried about anybody trying to, you know, play games and try to get in front of the proposed winning bidder, I think that fortunately for everybody, we have a scenario right now where we don't have to worry about those kinds of things. It could be a direct negotiation with Lawa, and then within a few weeks, we could probably see this before us, and everybody would be giving it a thumbs up.
Let me ask the winning bidder. Are, you know, is this something you're, I mean, I'm sure you would rather see this approved today, but is this something you're willing to work with us on? And according to our process, our bureaucratic process, as you've heard, we're a little limited in how we can actually achieve the, I think what we all want, and it's really not just council and Cardenas, I think we all kind of would love to see, you know, something like this, you know, in language.
Can I just ask a question, Ms. Hahn, and the city attorney?
Well, let me, I just asked a question. Let me have him finish.
The answer is certainly, yes.
Okay, okay. Good, yes.
I just want the city attorney, I think we should direct Lawa to take it back, come with a community benefits component that circles in everything that says.
That's what we're doing.
And that, I just want to say that, because I feel uncomfortable talking to, whether it's one or 101 awardees who are on the verge of getting a contract and negotiating here.
Well, we're not going to negotiate in public.
I understand that, but we are.
I just want to be respectful to the winning bidder, and make sure that we're not taking, you know, taking you for granted. We appreciate that. Actually, somebody did bid on it. It is, as even Tony said, it's a course, it's in shambles, it really needs some tender loving care. And I think you're willing to do that, but we would just like to see this look a bit. So, I would recommend that we send it back to Lawa. Hopefully, you can do it quickly.
Yeah.
Although, once they send it back, then we, the clock starts over again in terms of the 30 days. Okay. So, that would be my recommendation.
Recommendation, they come back, Lawa has a community component, benefits.
With specifics.
Specifics, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay.
Thank you very much.
And now, are we to item six? Park Plaza?
Well, I jumped around.
I also have item four.
Oh, okay, four.
Help four for you.
All right.
Under item four, the Board of Airport Commissioners submits for approval a lease with Mercury Air Cargo for 3.65 acres and a multi-use facility at 5908 Avion Drive at LAX. This lease would have a term of five years with two five-year renewal options, or a potential maximum term of 15 years, and would generate approximately 1.56 million in annual rent revenues, or approximately 7.8 million in revenues over the first five years. And the CAO has submitted a report and a recommendation for approval of the lease with Mercury Air Cargo.
The one reason that we're excited about this, that's sorry, Debbie Bowers, Los Angeles World Airports, that we're excited about this is that we had an empty cargo building, the old United Cargo Building.
Right.
We cut a deal with American, and so they moved their cargo activities and operations into the United building. And so, we were going to yet still have an empty cargo building. We ran an RFP, and Mercury and Arrow Term both expressed interest, and then Mercury was the only one who really gave us a proposal. So, we're excited now that we will not have any empty cargo buildings on LAX, and we'll be generating the additional income.
Great. Well, we're all very familiar with Mercury Air, and I think this is a great use for this facility, and I think this is a positive development on LAX. Councilmember of the district?
Couple of quick questions.
Yes, sir.
My question is regarding the new refrigerated cargo facility. Will this project better position LAX in our region to take advantage of some of that refrigerated cargo business from Latin America?
I believe.
Do we have a spokesperson from Mercury?
Yes, David.
Thank you, Chairwoman, members of the council. My name is David Herbst, Executive Vice President of Mercury. The answer is yes, councilman, in that the building we have the refrigeration unit in, we're going to be able to accommodate more cargo in because of this new building, as we are shifting a customer out of 6040 Avion, where the refrigeration unit is, putting him into 5908 Avion, which is going to allow for commerce, especially from South America, to prosper. We're up to four freighters a week now, full of perishables coming through LAX that previously weren't.
Very good. Second question is, can you also explain, this is to Lawa, if at all the new leases fit into the context of whatever changes we're considering under the specific plan amendment study?
I'm sorry, I cannot explain that.
Can't explain that?
No. I don't know if Mr. Malina is here, if he can, but...
Mr. Malina, can you...
Mr. Malina, also, can you explain how, if at all, the new lease fits into the context of whatever changes we're considering under the specific plan amendment study?
It doesn't.
So, we got no problem with that?
No problem at all.
Good, thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Lavand?
I'm good with it.
Okay, good. Well, so, I think this is a good deal. It sounds like you're expanding your cargo operations. That's a good thing. And do I have a motion to approve this?
No move.
Second?
Second.
Okay, it's unanimously approved. Congratulations. Yes.
I have sent in front of each of you pictures showing that we now do have water vending machines in the terminals right after you pass.
Do they have DWP water?
You know, I get complaints about this water.
Yeah, we want it to be DWP water.
This water I'm concerned about. Some people have said, I mean, I'd like to know more about this particular water, the DA.
Bisani?
Yeah.
What issues are you hearing?
Well, I'm hearing that it's not healthy water.
Well, I would disagree with you. I think it's a choice, yeah. I'm a doctor of water, so I would know.
All right, anyhow.
Well, we don't have this on the agenda today, but if you would like to get, you want to...
I'd like to report back on that particular.
Okay.
Okay.
I would just suggest, Bill, if we want to do something, we should do a motion on bottled water, because bottled water is not regulated as is tap water.
So, right.
So, I think, I don't know if the airport department could do that, so I would say, let's do, talk to a bucket of motion, and what about bottled water?
I think it's a great idea.
Okay.
Was this in response to issues at the airport, of people not finding water, or what's the point of this?
It started with a request from Councilwoman Lavand to Steve Martin, our chief operating officer. And so, we have, we finally had our vending contract put into place, and that was the way that we could do it, was through the vending machine company. I don't, the complaints would, you're...
That's right. The concern came from the committee that when passengers were, when water was taken away from passengers at the security checkpoint, that there was not a simple way for passengers to purchase bottled water throughout the terminals. So, Lawa took that seriously, and went out and negotiated vending machines throughout the terminals so that passengers could purchase water post-security.
You clearly, you clearly can't make everybody happy.
Did you pick this particular group, or did you have a competitive bidding, or what?
We had a competitive bidding for the vending machine contract that Lawa has, and they have a contract to put vending machines over 100 all across, all around the LAX. And we just added these locations to their contract.
And it's illegal, DWP is not allowed to sell their water, although I would love them to sell their water. They're not allowed to sell their water retail. They only could give it away. They only could sell it to the tap. That's why, someone asked why it's not DWP, so...
I'm not necessarily saying DWP, I'm just saying why this particular vendor...
They won the bid.
...I'm controversy about this particular water.
Okay, well, you can get a, we'll get a report back. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Now...
Now, could you also, just a minor motion, I don't know if it's okay with the city attorney, that when you're next to this vending machine, this was suggested by Councilman Lavand of the 4th District, above on the side.
Oh, oh.
No, I'm...
Get a photo, too.
And that's your daddy.
Yeah, okay. Now, are we on?
Item six.
Thank God.
As requested by the committee chair, Harbor Department staff are here to present a status report on the Plaza Park project, for which $5 million from the China Shipping Mitigation Fund has been approved for, by the board, for improvements to this park, which is located in San Pedro.
Colleagues, well, colleague, we lost one. This is a great opportunity. You know, China Shipping Settlement was a lawsuit where a group of homeowners and appellants sued the port over the expansion of the China Shipping Terminal. Port lost that case, and agreed to a settlement, which ended up to be about $50 million, oh, that was 60, $50, $60 million that must be spent in ways to mitigate, you know, the negative impacts of the port, aesthetic mitigation, air quality mitigation. And this park is a result of a approval of a $5 million dispersment from that China Shipping Settlement, which came up through the community, the Port Community Advisory Committee, neighborhood councils, everyone sort of comes together and suggests projects, which would be in line with using that money. This Plaza Park is one of the projects that we, the port has approved to be funded. So, I wanted an update, because I feel like it's been a bit delayed. It was actually in 2008 that the Harbor Commission actually approved the dispersment of this $5 million for this park. It's going to be done by Recreation and Parks. We're going to design the park and build the park. And so, I wanted to get an update on the status, because so far, the money has not been given to Recreation and Parks, and I want to know why. And more importantly, what we can do to get that money transferred to Recreation Parks, so they could begin building this park.
Sounds great.
It's a no-brainer. Okay. Mike Christensen, good morning.
Good morning. Mike Christensen, Director of Development for the Harbor Department. Councilmembers, as Councilwoman Hahn had mentioned, this project was slowed down a little bit over the summer, due to some issues related to coordination with another project adjacent. To frame this, the situation, Plaza Park is a north-south feature, as you see in the handout I gave you.
It's right above the water.
That occupies a space between Beacon and Harbor Boulevard. This is an area also that is being examined intensely for another waterfront-related project called Sampson Way. And it's, one of the items that we discovered in our outreach over the past few years with the community, was the importance of these east-west connectors between the community and the future Ports of Call development. So, what we did over the summer was looked how that could be made to work in the context of this other north-south feature Sampson Way, and also Harbor Boulevard. We have a concept of what we call some grand stairways, which would come down over the bluff from the community, Harbor Boulevard, and Plaza Park, and into Ports of Call. The long and short of it is this, we've had several meetings with community stakeholder groups, particularly a Chamber of Commerce group, the beautification group that is really pushing for the Plaza Park. We believe we've come up with a solution. That solution involves a community workshop, which will occur on November the 18th, focused on Sampson Way, but we're going to enlarge that to include the way that the community will get across Beacon, Plaza Park, Harbor Boulevard, and Sampson. And unless we find something unique or surprising from that workshop, we will be moving towards a two-phase project for Plaza Park. The first phase would be on the top side at Beacon, where we would do those improvements right away. And the second phase would be dependent on some of the resolutions for both Sampson Way and Harbor Boulevard. One of the things that has, that changed over the summer, Councilwoman, related to Sampson Way and Harbor, was a reconfiguration of the 7th Street-Sampson-Harbor intersection. It was determined that that, that the five-way intersection that was in the EIR for the waterfront, was going to create some very long crosswalks and some potential impediments to get the community across. So, over the summer, we developed another scheme, which is in the handout, which is a reconfiguration of that intersection. We think improves the connectivity, but it also has the impact of a retaining wall, which was right where we were going to put one of those stairways on Plaza Park.
Right.
So, we think...
Have you been meeting with Recreation, who is actually going to design and build this park?
The design of the park will be from Bureau of Engineering, under contract, to Rec and Parks.
Okay.
The transfer of funds would go to Rec and Parks. They would be in charge of the project.
Right. Here's my concern, is that, you know, in my opinion, this money could have already been transferred to, everything you are saying to me has nothing to do with transferring the money and allowing Recreation and Parks to begin meeting with you, Bureau of Engineering meeting with you, talking about what the issues are, what the concerns are, how do we achieve both goals, you know, having connectivity to the waterfront, but still going forward with the design. I mean, as you know, there's a lot of work in designing, there's a lot of pre-work before you actually, you know, build a park. So, it, I have a sense that you're sort of holding this money hostage, and that's what I don't like. In fact, yesterday, then five hours of the Harbor Commission meeting to finalize the TRAPAC MEO, this is what people are concerned about. This is what entities, groups working with the Port of Los Angeles have a problem with. The money has been approved, it rightfully belongs to the community. There was no objection to the funds being legally designated for this park, and yet, you know, it won't be agendized on the Harbor Commission to actually transfer the funds to Recreation Parks. Nothing you've said today, to me, could have precluded that money going to Department of Recreation Parks to begin work on this park.
The action, Councilwoman, before the board will be the agreement between the Harbor Department and Rec and Parks to actually transfer the money.
Right.
And what we'd like to do is move that to probably the first December agenda.
Right. Why hasn't that been agendized before now?
Part of the problem is the agreement with Rec and Parks has milestones for transfer of the money, based on a project that looks like it's not going to be able to happen, and that is the full project design.
Tom, this is a park. You don't want to talk about the park.
It's got, it's got to happen in two pieces, you know, basically Phase 1 and 2. So, we think we can make that happen. We think we can move that back to the board and get the money transferred.
We're almost done, Tom.
Yeah, it's a park, so, you know, I might need your help.
You got my help. And I, and I, the other thing, instead of calling it Park Plaza, I'd get the harbor name or something that relates it. There's a Park Plaza in...
Yeah, we can, we can certainly work on a different name. That's a great suggestion.
You got 100%. If I need this in committee, I'll put it in committee.
Thank you. I might need your, I might need your help. Okay. You see my, yeah. So, again, nothing you've said in any way excuses why this money hasn't already gone to Recreation Parks.
I hear what you're saying, Councilwoman. We'll push it very hard and get it into that December agenda.
Get this, yeah. I'm surprised, why isn't it on the November 4th agenda?
We need to get this agreement modified going to Rec and Parks. Otherwise, money transfers in a project phasing that's not representative of how we're actually going to...
Are you going to transfer the money in phases?
The agreement with Rec and Parks has the money transferring at three or four different points in the project development process.
Why?
That was a negotiation with Rec and Parks.
Why is this in a negotiation with Recreation and Parks?
That's typical of all the China Shipping agreements. The money transfers either upon being spent, or upon reaching project milestones.
I don't think that's anywhere in the settlement agreement, in the stipulated judgment.
I think that's the way they've all been done. I'd have to see, I'd have to research why that's the case.
Yeah, I, you know, I think this money needs to be transferred to the Department of Recreation Park. It's a city department, it's a certain account, Plaza Park, they know how to spend the money, they know when they need to spend the money. Again, you're holding it hostage. You've got strings on it. You have no right to put strings on this stipulated judgment money that the community, it goes to the community.
I'll take that one back and see if we could find a way to do that.
Because otherwise, we're going to go through this for like the next five years. And I don't want to go through it, and I don't think the community deserves to go through this. It's a good project. You, I think you would, you'd want to freely give this money, get this going, have the engineers, work with your engineers on whatever issues we can work out. But I don't think you want to, that was Geraldine's whole point. We don't want to dribble this money out like you've done in the past. Give it freely. Freely you give, freely you receive, as the Bible.
I'll check and see if there's any restriction that would require us, that would prevent us to do that.
Thank you. Okay. We have a couple of community members. Bill, if you need to get the council, go ahead. Adrian Martinez, Scott Gray, and Dr. Clyde Williams.
For a second.
Adrian, you're everywhere.
I know, I don't want to be late.
Yeah, I hear you. Maybe you should go down there and tell, tell him I'm here, and not to adjourn the meeting.
Very good.
Well, good morning, Chair Hahn. Adrian Martinez, on behalf of the Natural Resources Defense Council. You know, we think projects like this, which have broad community support and have gone through the hurdles, need to move quickly. We think this is especially important, given the momentous, the momentum we have on the decision yesterday at the Harbor Commission. I think that was a great agreement. We appreciate all the support this committee has provided, including the immense support you have. We think the staff has done a good job at moving TRAPAC finally, and now we just need to move forward. But I think we need to learn from these types of projects and make sure that TRAPAC, moving forward, the same problems don't persist. You know, we think this project can move quickly, and we agree with your assessment. We think this is required mitigation under the China Shipping Agreement.
Right. Do you, do you think, do you feel like there was anything in the stipulated judgment that talks about, you know, phasing money, that money can only be given when...
I need to look back, but I don't think so. But I think, I think the bigger issue is you had broad support. There was an opposition from entities like the State Lands Commission, so we need to make sure.
Right. This is a project that has been approved, it's a welcome project, and, yeah, I just, I worry with the Harbor Department continuing to sort of dribble it out.
Yeah. Well, we'll definitely help, hopefully, work to make sure this doesn't happen under TRAPAC, but we think, our sense from dealing with Dr. Nats and Mr. Christensen...
Yeah, because I think Dr. Nats wants to spend this money. In fact, that was her concern on the TRAPAC, was she said, "I don't want it to be like China Shipping."
Yeah.
It's been hard to spend the money. It's been hard to spend the money in China Shipping, but her comment about it's hard to spend the money was more about projects that got opposition from State Lands, or, but this one doesn't have any of that, and yet, the money's not being spent.
It's my understanding that port staff and the Harbor Commission wants to make TRAPAC run as smoothly as possible, now that we have this stamp of legal approval from the city attorney, we're ready to go.
But we could, we would like to see them use that same energy on Plaza Park.
Definitely.
Thank you. Okay. Good morning.
Councilwoman Han, I'm Scott, good morning, I'm Scott Gray. I'm, I have a business in San Pedro, three blocks up from this location. I'm the president of the San Pedro Convention and Visitors Bureau, and board member and secretary of the Central San Pedro Neighborhood Council. And I can come here representing all three, because we're in agreement, this project needs to get started now. We have waited long enough, and this is just a message to the community as we wait. You know, we're poised in San Pedro with the prospect of improved, improvements like this, with the, with the prospect of the Iowa coming, with the work that we're doing with the Convention and Visitors Bureau, to bring a lot of tourists in. But we don't have the infrastructure, we don't have the means of moving people from this potentially world-class waterfront up to our neglected downtown, and we need that now. The business owners need it today. This is not a project that needs to wait for bureaucracy, we've gone through the bureaucracy. We have the opportunity next month to offer our views to the port on this project, and I'm sure that the planners will, will use those to shape it. The consensus of my colleagues and my constituents as a neighborhood council representative is that this is such a long time coming, that it must be given not just adequate urgency, it needs to be given the greatest urgency. The greatest priority that this committee can give it to move it apace, so that San Pedro, its waterfront, and the downtown are ready and able to facilitate those visitors that are going to bring us revenues and bring us tax dollars-
Amen.
And make San Pedro the great town that it is.
Amen. Well said, Scott. Okay, Dr. Clyde Williams.
Okay. Dr. Clyde Williams, El Cerrino. It was interesting to watch this in comparison to Mr. Cardenas's concerns regarding the devil's always in the detail, their interpretation versus the others. And this is one of the problems that came up before here, Southern California International Gateway. Well, they were supposed to contact the appellants, but did they? Oh, the night before, they came back for the second time to get their extension.
Could you like keep on this Plaza Park item?
Okay. The Plaza Park item is the same sort of thing. Why do they keep the money? Because that is control. The Plaza Park needs the money, has the ability to use the money, and why? Where's the interest coming from $15 million if it's been set aside?
$1 million.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Anybody else wishing, Steve Kajin, I see you here, would you like to address this committee?
Well, you pretty much said everything that the community is in favor of, and that you represented as well, and, but I am here in front of the Chamber of Commerce.[1678.74]